Thank you, and welcome to the January 18th meeting of the East Hampton City Council. I was hoping to start with a roll call, please.
Justin Cobb.
Present.
Don Sikowski.
There.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Dan Hagan.
Present.
Joseph McCoy.
There.
Chester Ogilvett.
Present.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
Present.
To begin with, I did have a proclamation to recognize the retirement of Fire Captain John Phillips, who currently isn't present. I will read this.
Yes, he is.
Sorry?
He's right there.
Come on up.
As he turns red.
Basically, I'll make this short. I have a short proclamation here to read for what we have is retirement for a very special employee. It's not often you find an employee who not only dedicates their career to an organization, but also advances themselves within the same organization. It's a very rare employee. In East Hampton, we have many of those types of individuals. Tonight, we have the esteemed pleasure of actually getting to recognize and congratulating one all at the same time, one of those individuals, an individual who has become a true value to the city. And it's because of his retirement that he's going to be sorely missed. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Fire Captain John Phillips, and I'd like to present this to you as an appreciation of your 32 years of service to the city and reads as follows. The East Hampton City Council does hereby recognize Fire Captain Johnny Phillips for his 32 years of outstanding service protecting the citizens of the City of East Hampton as a valued member of the East Hampton Fire Department. This is signed by the Council President Justin Cobb and the Council Vice President Joseph McCoy.
Thank you very much.
Could I have, I'm going to do this in two separate motions. A motion to approve the minutes of the January 3rd meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No abstentions?
Abstentions.
One abstention. No objections. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 4th meeting?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of the January 4th meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? No objections. Now that said, before we get into our public speak time, I know there are some people here who want to have something to say. Also, because we have a couple of new councilors, want to reiterate and reinforce one of the rules of the City Council, it's Rule 5F, if it concerns public comment. Any member of the public may address the council during the public comment portion of the meeting after being recognized by the chair. The person should state his name and address, and time allowed, each person will be at the discretion of the chair. In general, each person should be allowed approximately three minutes, but we are flexible. All remarks during this period should be made to the council as a whole, not to an individual member, and remarks will not usually be followed by any kind of dialogue. Our role as a council is to listen for those who come up to a public speak. That said, if there's anybody here in the audience who would like to come to, up to the podium, identify themselves, and address the council, please do so.
My name is Suzanne O'Donnell. I live at 13 West Street. I want to address the issue of the racist remark made by Mr. Sikowski at the December 7th, 2011 City Council meeting, as well as what he considers his apology. I personally am very offended by both the remark and the so-called apology. Quote, "If I offended anyone," end quote. This is a conditional and backhanded apology. It really says, "I'm only sorry if someone was offended," laying the responsibility on the receiver of the hurtful language. And to say, quote, "I am sorry I said it," end quote. Sounds like the regret is flattering the words and getting called on it, rather than regretting the offense itself. I do appreciate and value the strong stand taken by the council in response, but I feel there is more to be done. If Mr. Sikowski is sincere in his regret over offending so many people, he needs to make a real, public, and direct apology to express true regret for his disrespectful, hurtful, and completely inappropriate words. If he is not willing or able to do that, then it seems to me that the issue is one of his not understanding the nature of the racism displayed, or his inadequate apology. In that case, I think the remedy is to be had through sensitivity training, and I recommend that Mr. Sikowski and the entire City Council participate in mandatory sensitivity training in the near future. Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to come to the podium, please identify yourself and...
Anna Encarnacion, E-N-C-A-R-N-A-C-I-O-N Mullen. Good evening. My name is Anna Encarnacion Mullen, and a resident of East Hampton for the past 11 and a half years. In May of 1999, when I moved here, I was so worried about how this community was to embrace me as a Puerto Rican. I decided back then that I was to sleep in East Hampton and conduct all my business in Amherst or North Hampton. After many years of just sleeping in East Hampton, I decided that this was my community too. Since I was paying taxes here and participated in the local elections, I was ready to embrace this community, whether this community was ready to embrace me or not. I became a member of the East Hampton Congregational Church. I met and talked about politics with friends I just met at the Sunrise Pastry Store, Bakery, I'm sorry. I attend the summer concerts of the parts, and I met great friends at the local business. My new approach got me to notice that East Hampton was changing economically and socially. I saw people that looked just like me. I noticed that more people of color were moving into our community and joining us. I started to feel better about my newfound community. I'm here tonight to let this committee know that as the community changes, we ought to change too. We need to create structures and support systems that supports people regardless of their ethnic background. We need to teach our children at schools that everyone is important, that different ideas or points of views are welcome, and more importantly, that stereotyping or any form of discrimination will not be tolerated. It saddens me that a member of this committee used such an inappropriate racial comment in such a public forum. It really does. I hope that these mistakes serve to educate and inform people about issues of discrimination, equity, respect for people regardless of their cultural background. I really do. As a guidance counselor and as an educator, I deal with children making mistakes every single day. One of the things I try to teach them is that when you make a mistake, and mistakes are made, we need to fix them and then move. We cannot stay stuck with that problem. At times, I have to help them take responsibility for their actions. I need to teach them about empathy and how to put themselves in somebody else's shoes. This is not an easy task. Sometimes shame does not allow children to move on and do what is right. There are times when I have to show them how to fix their problems by giving them prompts such as, "I am sorry for what I did. It won't happen again," to their victims and sometimes to their friends. Maybe we do need to take the steps that I take with the children at school. We need to learn how to say, "I'm sorry. It won't happen again." Besides the apology offered to this forum, besides apology offered to this forum, the Puerto Rican community deserves an apology and an assurance that this kind of behavior will not be tolerated again. Doing what is right is always a good way to show empathy and respect, and definitely will open doors of communication and collaboration. I think that anyone can open doors of understanding, acceptance, communication, and inclusion. I try to open those doors every day professionally and personally. It is my hope that this incident teaches us, the community at large, how to open doors to others regardless of their ethnic background. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm actually glad you chose East Hampton as your community. Does anyone else who would like to come out to the podium and speak to us on any matter that's not on the agenda, please come forward and I state your name and address. Okay, seeing none. We're going to get into some quick communications and reports. I do have a couple items to mention. The first is, we have, in our meeting agenda, we have two meetings that fall close or on a holiday. One is July 4th. We're going to move that meeting to July 11th. The finance meeting that was scheduled on July 11th will be moved to the 18th. The second is November 22nd, which is a little too close to November 21st, which is a little too close to the 22nd, which is Thanksgiving. So we're going to hold that meeting on the 20th. So everybody jot those down, please, and I'll take care of that. I do have a letter to read that the author couldn't make the public speak, asked me to read for her. She was instructed that because I have to read it. In these chambers, we adhere to the Tenets, the Robert Rules of Order, and the Quorum of Debate. So I have heavily edited this and actually informed her of what I was going to do. She has agreed to that. I'll read it as follows. It's from Laurel Gardner, 13 Plain Street, East Hampton, Mass., dated January 16th, 2012, to the members of the City Council. As a 20-year resident of East Hampton, I would like to add to the public record my comments regarding a councillor's recent remarks in these chambers, a comment this councillor made while sitting on the council as an elected city official. I was shocked when I learned about the initial comment and appalled when I read the solicited apology as quoted in the local newspaper. This apology strongly suggests that the councillor does not consider the remark to be both offensive and inappropriate. In view of this, the councillor's signature on the subsequent resolution against discrimination has little meaning. I would like to see the councillor choose one of two options: either resign from the position on the council, or agree to merely sign up for a cultural sensitivity training session. To me, the latter would indicate that the councillor is truly sorry about the remark and had a willingness to improve during the tenure on the council. People elected to our City Council have the responsibility of representing all residents equally and being ambassadors for our city to other regions. I hope that other residents, City Council members, and the mayor will agree. This councillor needs to seek education to enable the councillor to meet that expectation. If this councillor does not, he needs to vacate his seat. Thank you for your careful consideration of this important matter. Sincerely, Laurel Gardner. That said, I'll turn it over to the Vice President for some further communication.
Thank you very much. We have some business notices to make. First of all, as you most of you are aware, we will be losing our city planner Stuart Beckley. We'll be moving off to Ware, I believe, as the town manager. But there is a party for him on February 2nd, 2012, and this chamber is right here at 5:00 to 7:30 PM. There are tickets involved to cover costs of some of the foods. Those tickets are $20 per person, and you can get them from either the mayor's office or the city clerk's office. So please join us if you can to wish Stuart success in his new endeavor. Also, the annual census forms have been mailed out to all the households in East Hampton, and it's always best if you can try to return them to the city clerk as soon as possible. If you did not get your census, you can call 529-1460, which is the city clerk's office, and she can make sure you get one. You can also drop them off at many city locations, Biggie's, the banks, Council on Aging, and the library, if you have them with you. Also, 2012 dog licenses are now available and for sale in the city clerk's office. And also, we have a presidential primary coming up on March 6th, and if you need an absentee ballot, those are also now available. Again, for any of those topics I just mentioned, if you need information, you can call the city clerk's office at 529-1460. And lastly, a nice recommended notice of achievement, East Hampton's Art in the Orchard project received a Gold Star Award, which is one of three awards that are awarded by Massachusetts Cultural Council for that great art in the orchard that went on this summer. We'd like to not only congratulate East Hampton for doing a terrific job, but some of the organizers, Jean Pierre Pash, and the orchard owners, Elaine Hartley and Russell Brain. So again, congratulations for doing a terrific job and getting that recognition. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, would it be okay for me to do my report out before we open the panel?
Yeah, I'm going to actually, we're running a little late for the public hearing. I'm going to allow a councillor to speak because I know he has to leave early for another pre-scheduled engagement. So this will be the only committee report, then we're going to move into a public speak.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Please, you have the floor.
So I'd like to report out for ordinance. We did have an organizational meeting earlier tonight, at which I was nominated and elected the Chair of Ordinance Subcommittee. And at that time, we also nominated and elected our secretary, Nathan Ziegler. And we set a date for our next meeting, which is February 8th, which is going to be in Conference Room B from 6:00 to 7:00. And at that time, we're going to look at the special permitting process and also have a robust public speak time. So if anybody would like to come to that meeting and talk about other issues relating to ordinance, that would be a good time to do so.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Do I have a motion to enter a public hearing, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to enter into the public hearing. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions or objections? None?
House of Hagan.
Your show.
The first public hearing tonight, I'll do a second reading. First, excuse me, second reading is a request for the following appropriation dated December 5th, 2011. The amount requested is $38,454.33 to be appropriated from free cash. In that amount, to be appropriated to the following: police overtime, $7,878.15; fire overtime, $9,756.80; highway overtime, $6,002.39; tree warden overtime, $1,119.96; council on aging overtime, $705.51; wastewater treatment plant overtime, $11,576.89; and water department overtime, $1,414.63. The amounts requested are all a result of additional hours worked by our city departments involving the winter storm Albert. I guess that's the name of that winter storm that came in October. The committee, before I open it up to the public, the committee reviewed this matter and did get backup information, which we will discuss after the public hearing. But at this time, any members of the public that would like to comment on this appropriation, this is the time they can...
If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on this, please step forward to the podium and identify yourself and address the council. Seeing none, I'd like to say that this is being used to replenish funds expended in response to the storm, and I hand it over to the councillor to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. As I said, it was vetted by the committee, and the departments provided the information. It was also passed 3-0 on the 11th by the Finance Committee. This time, I'll make a motion that we appropriate the amount of $38,454.33 to, in the various figures that I gave before, to the police overtime, fire overtime, highway overtime, tree warden overtime, council on aging overtime, wastewater treatment plant, and water overtime.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to approve $38,454.33 to replenish funds expended in response to winter storm Albert. Any further comment on the motion? I do have one. I'd like to note that the Finance Committee did, thanks to the hard work of the Finance Director, receive additional information to reconcile how all these numbers you see on the sheet tonight were dry. And we did vote, again, I'll concur, 3-0. That said, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
The second public hearing tonight, I'll have them do a second reading of the appropriation dated December 22nd, 2011, and signed by the three appropriate officials in town, is a amount requested, $10,350, to be appropriated from retained earnings. In that amount, $10,350, as follows: sewer department supplies, $850; sewer department batuminous pavement, $5,200; and sewer department pipes and fittings, $4,300. The amount requested will be used for, these were funds expended already for an emergency repair to the drainage line off Pleasant Street. Basically, this was a drainage pipe that went from Pleasant Street and goes across, I believe, between the funeral home and the next property and does the drainage. It broke, and again, the committee vetted it. But at this time, I'd like to ask anyone from the public that has any comment on it to please step forward to the podium.
Seeing none?
Seeing none.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the following motion, that the council approve the following appropriation in the amount of $10,350 from retained earnings to the following: sewer department supplies, sewer department batuminous pavement, and sewer department pipes and fittings.
Second.
We have a supplemental appropriation request motion on the table to appropriate the amount of $10,350, as previously stated, to fund emergency repairs to a drainage line off of Pleasant Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Objections? Abstentions? Motion passes.
Third public hearing, and I might say just for the record, the third and the fourth public hearing are very similar in nature. They just come from different funding sources. But the first one is a request for $16,926.78. The following appropriation request was made by the following, the city officials on December 27th, 2011. The amount to be appropriated from retained earnings is $16,926.78, to be appropriated to the enterprise reserve for expenditure. The purpose of this is, and I, is for what's called payroll smoothing in the water sewer and wastewater departments. I know the Finance Director and the mayor are both here. If there's, after the public hearing, or the public has a right to speak to further explain it, but what public smoothing is, is the Department of Revenue has recommended that our accounting system be such that people are paid for the days they work from the fiscal budget of that year, and not, if there's a couple of days that run into the next year, it has to be paid out of that budget. And this is a one-time thing that will bring half our city workers in compliance with that Department of Revenue suggestion. At this point, if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, or the mayor, or the Finance Director.
No one from the public? Okay, that said, I'll entertain a motion then.
I'll make a motion that we appropriate the following amount: $16,926,78 from retained earnings. In that amount, to the enterprise reserve for expenditure fund.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion on the table to a supplemental appropriation request for the amount of $16,926,78 to be appropriated from retained earnings to the enterprise reserve for expenditure fund. The funds used will be for fiscal 12 payroll smoothing in the water sewer and wastewater departments. All those in favor?
Excuse me, I just, if I could, on, comment on the motion.
Any further discussion on the motion? Go ahead.
I just, quickly, this was approved 3-0 again by the Finance Committee. And the only, during our deliberation, the only question that came up, and again, I didn't see it as a real problem, but it did come up, and I, so I felt it should be noted because it was brought forward, is that this should, or was known according to the Finance Director last March, and some question why, some question from the public why, that wasn't added into our budget. And I think they were answered that night, at least the ones that showed up at the meeting. But I did want to say that there was some public discussion, members of the public did come to the Finance Committee and questioned why it wasn't put into the budget and had to be a matter for the supplemental appropriation.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? House Hagan? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no abstentions, no objections. Motion approved.
Final public hearing tonight, again, is closely related to the last one. This is in the amount of $40,654.52. The request for the appropriation was made on December 27th, 2011, has the three signatures of the city officials on them, and is to be appropriated from free cash retained earnings in the amount of $36,024.60 from free cash, and $4,629.92 from retained earnings, to be appropriated to the general fund reserve for expenditures in the amount of $40,654.52, to provide funding for the FY 2012 payroll smoothing in cities' administrative departments excluding public safety. At this time, any members of the public, again, this is the same appropriation that was done for the, out of the enterprise fund for the city administration, again, its accounting procedure, all the same factors were involved. And at this time, anyone from the public who would like to step forward and speak on it, this is your time.
I'd also like to open up to the mayor and the Finance Director, if they have any further comment. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that the council approve the amount of requested appropriation in the amount of $40,654.52 from free cash to the $36,024.60, and the retained earnings $4,629.92, to be appropriated to the general reserve fund for expenditure.
Second.
We have a supplemental appropriation request in the amount of $40,652.52 on the table. Any further discussion on the motion? Counselor. So does this mean that $40,000 will be less than for the following year's budget?
It was my understanding, and again, I guess we could suspend the rules for the Finance Director or the mayor to discuss it at greater length, but it's my understanding that this is a one-time expenditure that's going to catch us up, and it isn't going to be, it's something that hasn't been done, so we need to spend this one time, and that it won't be an ongoing expenditure, it'll be one time. But it isn't going to save on the next fiscal year, that, in that amount. It's just an accounting area that will coordinate the funding to balance. But certainly, if it's within the council rules to...
We have a motion on the table. We'd have to remove the motion.
You'd have to remove the motion. I mean, I'd be willing to remove the motion because it looks like the Finance Director would like to, if not, I won't.
The, as the council... Individual second motion?
Or if you would like there, further explanation, Chip, by all means, I'll remove my motion to...
I would like to know. Okay. Individual second in motion, are they willing to remove it? Okay, the motion is off the table. Please identify yourselves.
I'm Zawinski, Finance Director. So, Chip, the issue here is that it's not going to save money in next year because this year, we paid the last week of June in this year's budget. So it's a shift. So, like, when we started budgeting, I said, I think, in the meeting 30 years ago... So like when we started budgeting, I said, I think in the meeting thirty years ago, but much longer ago than that, we had always budgeted based on when the check was cut versus when the hours were worked. And so the shift is from a very long time ago. So this is just a shift, we don't really spend, nobody's actually making any more money. It's a budgetary movement of what year the cost was in. Does that? Okay.
It's accounting.
Okay, what I'll do is actually read the, no, I won't, that's not easy. That said, I'll entertain a motion again if that satisfies the counselor.
Again, I'll make the motion that we requested the following amount of forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents to be appropriated from free cash in the amount of thirty-six thousand, twenty-four sixty, and retained earnings, four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine, ninety-two, to be appropriated to the General Reserve for Expenditures Fund.
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion on the table, supplemental appropriation request of forty thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty-two cents to provide funds for fiscal twelve payroll smoothing in city administrative departments excluding public safety. I'd like to hear any further discussion on the motion, Counsel Hagan?
Just one further comment, again, this was also a matter like the previous public hearing where there were members of the public, again, made the same inquiry into this at the Finance Subcommittee meeting, and it was subsequently approved three-zero by the Subcommittee.
Any further comment on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections, any objections or abstentions? None? Motion passes. Move the public hearing to be closed.
Second.
Public hearing is now closed, we're going to move on to our. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, close the public hearings.
Aye.
No abstentions or objections, so off we go. Okay, we're going to move on to our committee reports, Rules and Government Relations, Counsel Rist.
Thank you.
Oh, Mayor Report, we got a Mayor Report in there. Mayor Communication, please, Mike.
Mr. President, I don't have anything on the agenda if there's any questions from the members.
Any questions for the members, for the mayor?
Thank you.
You're good, okay. Rules and Government Relations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, this evening, we met, and I was elected Chair of the Committee, and Counselor Ogalevitz was asked to be the Secretary. Also, we will meet on February 1st at 5:30, that's the next meeting, February 1st, in these chambers to discuss the pending rule requests that I have submitted to the council. And to save time, I'm also going to inform the council why these two rules I have presented to you need to be discussed and move them to committee. First of all, Rule 8 was a long rule written a few years ago to try and deal with the many ways we could vote on items that are presented to us. The items I'm referring to are anything measures ordinance appropriations. But this year, with the charter change, the rule is no longer necessary because we can only pass anything with a five-vote affirmative vote. So the rule needs to be changed, and it's really just a cleaning up of our rules. The second item I put in is because there was a lot of discussion during the unfortunate incident that took place and is still on the table a few weeks ago, as to whether or not we should have ethics rules in our rules. I note in my paragraphs here, comments that I had spoken to our state legislature and our state senator and asked what they have at the state legislature, and they do have rules in writing. And of course, that's, that the Ethics Committee of the House and Senate deal with. So my proposal is twofold, one is to discuss whether we want to add this language. If the Rules Committee votes in favor of presenting that to the council, then the council will vote whether or not they want the language developed by the committee. So it's a two-step process. I didn't want to just write a rule because I don't know what that rule would be, and I'm not sure myself whether or not we need it. So I present these in the form of a motion to be moved to Rules Committee for discussion.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion on the table to move the new rules based on the charter to rules for discussion. All those, actually, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or extensions, none? Okay, Counsel Rist?
I'm done, thank you, sir.
Okay, our next, the next meeting?
I said February 1st, 5:30.
Finance, Counsel Hagan?
We had our reorganization meeting on the 18th, excuse me, on the 11th, at which time I was, the three committee members are myself, Counsel Rist, and Counsel Cobb. I was elect Chairman of the Committee, and Counsel Rist was elected as the Clerk Secretary of the Committee at that time. I will note that our next meeting is going to be January 25th, 2012. And the one change is part of our reorganization meeting, we've decided to move the standard Finance Committee meetings from 6:30, they'll be in the same Room 1, but instead of the 6:30 start, that they'll now start at 6 o'clock. So that's the only change, it'll still be every other Wednesday, but they'll be meeting at 6 o'clock rather than 6:30. I also would like to set for public hearings, and if it's okay with the council, I'll read all four of them and then make one motion unless there's an objection to that. The first public hearing I'd like to set, the first public hearing I'd like to set is the following appropriation of twelve thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars, which would be paid from free cash and retained earnings for the one and a half percent COLA for pay plan employees. Along with that, I believe, would go the pay plan schedule. The second public hearing is twenty-five thousand dollars from the CPA funds to preserve open space along East Street. The third public hearing will be thirty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars for analysis of the expansion to the Oliver Street landfill for gas monitoring. And the final public hearing would be for fifty thousand dollars to extend the water sewer utilities to Fort Hill Road. I'll put all four of those in a motion to conduct public hearings at our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to set public hearings for the aforementioned supplemental appropriations and one amendment to the classification pay plan. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
No objections, no objections.
That concludes the Finance Report.
Thank you. Public Safety, there's so many.
Thank you, Mr. President, we organized, and I was selecting the Chair, and Counsel Winnie will be the Clerk. I'm not going to set up our next meeting at this point, being new to the Committee, I want to get myself up to date on the topics, and so we will be setting our first meeting at the next City Council. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Appointments, Counsel Winnie.
Yes, thank you. At our organizational meeting, they have appointed me as their Chair of Appointments, and Counselor McCoy will be our Recording Secretary. We met tonight, and we had three mayoral appointments in front of us. The first three that I'm going to move forward for appointments are three Board of Assessor appointments. This is a little bit different for the council, as the three appointments that I'm moving forward with tonight were, in fact, before the charter change, the City Council appointments. They have now become the mayoral appointments, so there's a little shift there with the charter change. So with no objections from any of the City Councilors, I'm going to move forward the three Board of Assessor appointments. Two appointments are renewals, who have asked to reserve on this board, and one is a new appointment. I will read the new appointment first so that I can open it up for discussions for anybody, and then I'll move forward with the two reappointments, and then the new appointment for the Agricultural Commission. So the first appointment will be for Patricia Cavalli to the Board of Assessors with her term expiring on December 31st, 2014. She is a new appointment to the Board of Assessors, and she's also the longest appointment to the Board of Assessors. And at this time, if anybody would like to open it up for any questions, or if anybody feels that they may think that me, the Appointment Subcommittee may want to bring her in to speak to us, I'll open that for discussion.
Any comment from anybody?
Okay, thank you. Then I'll move that appointment forward to appoint Patricia Cavalli to the Board of Assessors with her term expiring December 31st, 2014.
Second.
I have a motion on the table to recommend approval of Patricia Cavalli as the Board of Assessors' mayoral appointment. Any further discussion on this appointment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
No extensions, no objections, motion passes.
Thank you. The next two appointments are reappointments that were made initially by the City Councilors to the Board of Assessors. The first will be Peter Davies to the Board of Assessors, and this is in the form of a motion with his term of expiring on December 31st, 2012. And I will do these separately as their terms are different from each other.
Second.
I have a motion on the table to recommend approval of a mayoral appointment for Peter A. Davies to the Board of Assessors, ending 12/31/12. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any extensions or objections? None.
Thank you. The next appointment is W. David Zagorski to the Board of Assessors with his term expiring December 31st, 2013. Form of a motion?
Second.
We have a motion on the table to recommend approval of a mayoral appointment for the Board of Assessors, W. David Zagorski. He's a renewal, 12/31/13. Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
No extensions, no objections.
And the third appointment is Jerry Rousher to the Agricultural Commission with her term of expiration of December 31st, 2014, in the form of a motion, please.
Second.
We have a motion on the table for a mayoral appointment for Jerry Rousher for the Agricultural Commission, the term expiring 12/31/14. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, no extensions, no objections, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be February 1st in these council chambers at 5:45 for the new mayoral appointment that's coming down. And I've also been asked by our City Clerk to make the announcement that there are some vacancies on our zoning board, and if anybody is interested in serving this, to contact the mayor's office and let him know so that he can bring your name forward to serve on our zoning board. I think that's it for my report, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you. Property, Counsel Salkowski.
We had our organizational meeting tonight, I got elected Chair. Justice Ogalevitz became Recording Secretary, and our other member is Salem Derby. We have set a meeting for two weeks hence at 5:30 in these chambers to discuss the land taking along North Hampton Street for the bridge.
Mr. President.
Counselor.
Counsel Salkowski, we do have a problem, and maybe you and I could rectify it since Counsel Ogalevitz is on two committees meeting at the same time. We may need to deal with that. I don't know how to deal with it now, Mr. President, unless we deal with it after the meeting and discuss how we can resolve the time.
Well, our meeting is going to be relatively short because it, there isn't, there isn't much to the issue because it affects, it affects the bridge, and it's, it's town property, so that should be just a formal discussion that's going to take a few moments, but we do have to have a meeting for that, and.
Can you do 5:25, or can you do 5:25?
That's fine by me.
Okay, fine, okay. Thank you very much, sir, thank you.
Does the clerk record that, make that change?
In these chambers.
Anything else, Counselor?
That's it.
Thank you. I see no old business, new business, we have a couple items we can have to get to and vote on. The first is a request to establish a donation account. And I'll be happy to read this, I'm hoping someone will make a motion to approve this. We have it for us, for approval to establish a donation account pursuant to the positions of Massachusetts General Lodge, Chapter 44, Section 53A. Approval is hereby given to establish an account to receive donations from East Hampton Council on Aging executed this 10th day of January 2012. Could I have someone make a motion?
Make a motion to accept that donation.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to accept and establish this donation account. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the account is established. The next item we have is our election warrant for the primary in March. I'd like the motion to recommend approval of this.
So moved, second.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to recommend approval of the warrant for the primary in March. This will contain the presidential preference for the Commonwealth, the State Committee Man, the State Committee Woman, and the Ward Town and Committee in East Hampton. That said, any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any objections or abstentions? None, the motion passes. The next one, Counsel Rist, I've already moved that one, and that leaves mayoral appointments, Counsel.
Thank you, move that, the appointment for Fran Hamel to Zoning Board of Appeals, we move down to Appointment Subcommittee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move the mayoral appointment of Fran Hamel to Zoning Board of Appeals on the floor. Any further discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
No extensions, no objections, motion is approved.
I have one quick comment I'd like to make, that I would be remiss if I didn't say something. I did receive from the Fire Chief a quick notice that we have a new captain to replace the one that's retiring. I'd like to welcome and congratulate him, Captain Kevin Benson. We also have a new call-on-call firefighter, Richard Aldrich, I would like to welcome him. And the Fire Department also now has a new chaplain. That ceremony just took place a little while ago, Father Paulus, and I'd like to thank.
Tomorrow, tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
The ceremony's.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow's ceremony at the 19th at 10:00 AM. I'd like to extend this invitation if anybody here would like to attend, that would be great. And thank the Father for taking on these responsibilities. That said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no objections, no objections, motion is over, thank you.